All right, good evening. Welcome to February. This is our first meeting for February Tuesday, February 7th. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I will start our city clerk with our roll call.
Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe. Councilmember Kentrean.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Otuja Endipure.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember O'Farrell, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have our land acknowledgement statement. Deputy Mayor Lamb, do you mind doing that?
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved. Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, our agenda is approved. Next, we will move right into public comment. Thank you so much, Krista. We'll start in the room, and then we'll move to Zoom if it cooperates.
Thank you.
All right. First, we have Larry.
My name is Larry Walter Crandall. Oh, there it is. Larry Walter Crandall at 4335 Issaquah Pine Lake Road, Samamish. And then I want to, I guess, plan ahead or spend ahead. And next week, you're going to talk about random acts of kindness. So I'd like to do mine tonight and say, that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you. I approve of 30-second public comments. That was great. All right, next up, we have Mark Cross.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Appreciate it. Mark Cross, 247 208th Avenue Northeast in Samamish. I just wanted to come tonight and really thank both the council and staff for your work on the Thompson Road Drainage and Sidewalk Project. This is really going to be a transformative project for our neighborhood, which will provide us access, physical access, down to a big recreational facility, East Lakes Samamish Trail. It'll also correct and address storm drainage issues that I've seen build up since I moved there 35 years ago, 1987. In 1987, you couldn't get pizza delivered to my house because I was too far out in the country. And since then, a lot of houses have been built, a lot of developments occurred, trees have come down. And I think that what you're doing with this project will both help the neighborhood, help us have citizens and kids that can wait for the bus on a real sidewalk. It's all going to be very positive. It'll also help the Kocany in Zaccus Creek if they can have a chance to complete their life cycle there in the stream. Controlling urban runoff is probably a key to that part of it. I would also say that, and I provided a photograph for you tonight, so you could see where there will be a link down onto the trail. And I know maybe other people requested that, but I know I did personally when I served on council 16 years ago. And so I hope you'll all take from that, that you can have a good idea today, and it could be a while before it comes to fruition, but it's still worth doing and still worth starting on these things. And I do also appreciate the language that you use about being with the Salish tribes and acknowledging first people here. As we work on issues with water quality and the lake, I'm thinking that it's important that we stay close to the Snoqualmie tribe and other tribes that care about the fish and our water quality. I think that'll help us all make better decisions. So thank you for that. I do hope that you take the same opportunity to look at projects that address both transportation and parks and other issues, and that really some of the magic of your work is in collecting information from all these different departments and then finding projects and linkages to help all of those departments meet the greater set of policy goals that you as a council set. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Sattler, 19446 Southeast 27th Place in Samamish. I've been a resident of Samamish for eight years, and I attend the Spirit of Peace United Church of Christ in Issaquah. I'm here tonight just to say a few words fully in support of extending the permit for Tent City Four to remain at Mary Queen of Peace. I knew that Tent City Four was in Samamish, but only recently became aware that they're located at Mary Queen of Peace. I live very close by. I walk this area regularly. I come to the library weekly and never even knew that this was their location, which I think speaks to how well-run and how well-managed and how well-maintained the camp is. In comparison, I worked in Seattle Pioneer Square for eight years before the pandemic and saw many encampments that were not as well-managed and maintained. I think it's important to distinguish when we use the word "encampment" that this can mean very different things. What we see on the news is very different than what I see when I go to Tent City Four. Tent City Four has a strict code of conduct. It's self-managed, requires participation from all residents and the maintenance of the camp, and they're truly neighbors in our community. I felt so fortunate to live in Samamish, which is a safe community full of folks who care about quality of life, but at the same time, I've felt that we're in this bubble, and we need to be more inclusive, more accessible, and more inviting. So that's why I'm so grateful for Mary Queen of Peace, for their willingness to host Tent City Four. And I'm so grateful for our city council for considering an outside-of-the-box solution to put the humans affected by this extension ahead of politics and be true to your principles and do the right thing. And I know it's not the easiest thing at times. And also to listen to opposing positions with care and compassion and then act with justice and equity. While your vote to extend the stay of Tent City Four means that you are giving a group of people the gift of time in the coldest, wettest time of year to not have to relocate now and then again in a few weeks. Speaking about the relocation, the only option available now is the High Point exit location, and I've heard it mentioned several times as an option, and it pains me to even call it an alternative because the conditions there are so difficult. If any of you have been up hiking at that exit, you know that it's simultaneously very isolated, and it's also very exposed. It offers no electricity, no water, no heat, and it sandwiches folks between a mountain and a freeway in the middle of winter without regular access to transportation. Just because folks have survived that location doesn't mean that it's an option. So I'm out of time, but I just want to say that I'm part of a committed group of individuals, churches, and community members that are working very diligently to relocate Tent City Four, and we just need more time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, everyone. I am Lalita Opala, and I am the Executive Director for Indian American Community Services, Go By She/Her. Thank you all for having me here today. I come to you as an executive director of my own organization, IACS, but also as a commissioner to the Commission on Asia-Pacific Island American Affairs, to the governor, and a commissioner for the King County Immigrant Refugee Commission. I would like to first thank you, the city of Samamish, for the opportunity IACS has been given to provide cross-cultural programming to seniors residing in Samamish. We understand that this decision has not been welcomed by all, and I want to reassure you that we are here to continue to make efforts to speak to different groups of seniors, to be inclusive in our efforts to create a welcoming space for seniors of Samamish at Beaver Lake Lodge. Seniors in Samamish should have opportunities to access resources, programming, and connections that address isolation, health, and wellness. As immigrant refugee communities, we have often found ourselves in unwelcome spaces. Hence, we are more than determined to create a welcoming and inclusive program that is representative of all cultures. We are not perfect. We are work in progress each day in our organization, and I just ask for grace in that space. I welcome each of you city council members, city staff, and volunteers to join us at Beaver Lake Lodge Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, starting March 6th, at the Cross Cultural Program for Seniors in Samamish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nanda Tewari. I will reiterate what Lalita has said. I work as the Senior Services Coordinator for IACS, and I have been overseeing senior programming in Bellevue, Bothell, Mount Si, Not Shore, Snow Valley, and Issaquah. I have been a resident of Samamish for 25 years, and we are really, really thankful for the city to give us this opportunity, where I'm also a member of Women's Advisory Board for King County. We are looking forward to welcoming seniors, as Lalita said, from all across Samamish on March 6th to the kickoff of the senior program. We want to create an inclusive, cross-cultural space where connections are made. We never had such a space before for the seniors in Samamish, so we are truly grateful to have this opportunity, and we will be very, very intentional in our efforts, and we look forward to welcoming, as Lalita said, all of you to our kickoff on March 6th. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Eastman, East Lakes Samamish Parkway. Usually when people come to these meetings, it takes a lot to get up here. You usually have some sort of intentions or angle or, you know, with Mary, you know, it's going to be stormwater, critical areas, mapping. She does very good at those things. Paul's internal wants and needs. I get up here, and a lot of times, I just run my mouth. And my brother, who also happens to be my boss, investor in our property, and business partner warned me he was going to come to council meeting early 2023, so he's here tonight. I thought, oh, shoot, I better rein in my vision and actually have some intentions. So formed a website, gathered all the visioning and the things that I've talked about for the last six years and put those together and put a plan forward. I've talked about the last few council meetings. I have yet to hear back from staff or council, but I'm hopeful that I will, that we can use it as part of the scope, scoping update for the comp plan and discuss this. We own 100 acres. I don't think anybody's ever come forward with 100 acres in Samamish, and I don't know if that'll ever happen again. So it's a unique opportunity to work together and accomplish city council goals. I think our vision aligns with every single goal that city councils put forward, and we're hopeful that we can go from spending three minutes up here every meeting, running my mouth, to actually sitting down with council and providing you guys all the additional informations and studies and go over all the data and the hard work that we've collected over the last six years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary O'Brien. My address is 3931 202nd Place Southeast in Samamish. I also own 1107 228th Avenue Southeast, just across the fence from you. Thank you for those that met with my family today and to advise us of your intent to declare an emergency to allow TC4 to extend their stay at Mary Queen of Peace past their permit at time. I understand the city is concerned that TC4 has not secured a location to relocate when their permit expires on February 18th. That TC4 finds themselves in this situation is not an emergency. With full knowledge that their permit expired on February 18th, Steve, TC4, represented to the administration of Arbor Montessori School on January 5th, that they hadn't even been working on securing a follow-up location. I'm happy to understand that now there are some people helping them to try to do that. I read in your agenda that you two had reminded them on February 6th and again later in the month, and when you went up there at the end of the month, they didn't have anything. What a surprise. It takes a long time. But we agree this is an issue. It's not one that Arbor Montessori School is a part of. In 213, when Mary Queen of Peace first hosted TC4, there was no ordinance in place, and TC4 was allowed to come to Samamish because it was an emergency. They didn't have anywhere else to go. And when they were allowed to extend their stay because of COVID, we didn't raise any objection. We have 145 students, 280 parents, and 45 staff members. There's no way that we can appease all of them. So we hire a security guard at $550 per day. TC4's self-made emergency of lack of planning will cost us an additional $16,500. I noted in your agenda that it doesn't cost you anything. On top of this, the $27.50 that we paid for the first week that we had a security guard on site because someone in your department decided that they were going to fudge the start date by a week and that that wasn't deemed important, but we relied on it as taxpayers, as business members, as a community member. We relied on the city to follow what they said, and we paid for an extra week as a The use of this fake emergency to justify unlawful action by the city council, it's not an emergency, to change the terms of the permit is disingenuous. In speaking with council members today, you told us that some members of TC4 choose to live in tents. They're not even using this as a temporary situation.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah McConnell. I'm a longtime resident at 1919 East Beaver Lake Drive Southeast in Samamish, excuse me, and I serve on the board of Spirit of Peace United Church of Christ. Spirit of Peace UCC rents space from Our Savior Lutheran Church, and we are aligned in our values of compassion and justice. Our two congregations wish to co-host Tent City Four on our Savior Lutheran property. You have heard from one, and we'll hear from a couple more, representatives from Spirit of Peace UCC, but our Savior Lutheran Church members were unable to be here tonight. They submitted a letter as public comment, but also asked us to read it in this space as a sign of their support. This is their letter. City of Samamish Council, Our Savior Lutheran Church of Issaquah has our executive council meeting tonight at the same time as your Samamish City Council. We ask the representative from Spirit of Peace to present this letter of support. Our Savior Lutheran and Spirit of Peace are sharing space at 745 South Front Street, Issaquah. We have almost five acres of land, which is between the Issaquah Creek, Issaquah Nursing Rehab Center, and Engie Johnson Park. The park is open space with no amenities, parking, or trails. Our Savior Lutheran has about two acres of lawn and parking behind the church to the Issaquah Creek. It is very secluded, where only a small part of the rehab center can be seen. There is an unused house, which was a parsonage, next to the creek. We can get water and power from the parsonage. Our two churches sent a delegation to Tent City Four at their current location in Samamish two weeks ago. We were impressed with their orderliness and professionalism. Our Savior Lutheran has started the process to get approval from the congregation for a stay in our back lot. The Our Savior Lutheran leadership team is very supportive of the plan to move Tent City Four to us. We are hoping to be ready by the middle of March. The city of Issaquah appears very supportive of the plan. Spirit of Peace is spearheading the process with the city. We hope the city of Samamish will allow Tent City Four to stay a bit longer so the camp can move directly to our site. Chuck Bachman, Bob Johnson, co-presidents, Our Savior Lutheran Church. One other resource I wanted to make sure to share with you. Steve and Erin from Tent City Four are here and have frequently asked questions, resource sheets that may be helpful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just wanted to interject real quick. We're having some issues with the Zoom audio, but YouTube is working, so if anyone is trying to view the meeting, just maybe try YouTube if you can. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Jen Hagedorn, and I'm the pastor at Spirit of Peace United Church of Christ. Before COVID, our congregation worshiped for many, many years at the Pine Lake Community Center, so about a third of our members are Samamish residents. You've heard from a few. Spirit of Peace UCC is eager to co-host Tent City Four on the property we share with Our Savior Lutheran Church, and I am here in support of the proposed permit extension. Our Savior Lutheran's council, as you heard, is tied up tonight, working on this issue diligently and otherwise would have been here themselves. I also bring greetings from Reverend John Vaswick, who's the interim pastor at Our Savior Lutheran Church. He wanted me to express his support of Tent City Four, his hope that the city council will offer a much-needed extension, and his belief that the congregation will affirm leadership's desire to host the encampment. Tent City Four is a unique and important piece of our social safety net. I've been connected to Tent City Four on and off for over 15 years, and although the people do change, the commitment to community, the care, and their code of conduct have remained consistent. If the rest of our society acted with the integrity and compassion that Tent City Four shows, I believe that this world would be a much, much better place. I stand here in solidarity with Tent City Four residents because we have a system that requires them to move with unbelievable regularity. I could not imagine moving my home, changing all my routines, finding new bus routes, beginning my life again every 90 days, and yet they are able to consistently pull off this miracle. They just need a little extra time this time. They are a self-sustaining camp that asks very little from the communities where they work, sleep, eat, live their lives, shop, and all they need is a little more time to be able to be that well-oiled machine that they are, day in and day out. On the other hand, to send Tent City Four to a location without water, without electricity, without heat, is what should be considered by a society of just and compassionate people, a state of emergency, a natural disaster in any other place. By church standards, Our Savior Lutheran is moving at lightning speed. I know church standards are slow, but they're moving really quickly. Spirit of Peace is acting quickly to secure a special use permit with the city of Issaquah. The city has done this multiple times before and is fully supportive of this process. Everything that is needed is in motion. Everyone involved is committed and motivated and energized and believes this is possible, not out of faith or optimism, although we have it, but because we can do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I ask a favor of the council? I'm not the person that was supposed to speak tonight in person. They might be queued up online, but if that's not the case, can I go last?
Do we have anyone else in the room that would like to give a public comment? Paula?
Go ahead, because I'm only here as a backup person, so.
Yeah, Paula, go ahead. And then we'll move to Zoom if we are on Zoom.
I don't normally take my mask off in public places, but I will tonight. Hello, dear council. My name is Paula Harper Christiansen, Samamish resident for 36 years. I've reached out to some of you. I think you all know why I'm here tonight. It is in support of an extension of stay for Tent City Four. Tent City Four needs our help. It's unconscionable to imagine living at the side of I-90 at High Point, particularly in the winter. And if that doesn't constitute an emergency, I don't know what does. The situation is urgent. It is critical for the well-being of about 20 people in our community. And you've heard from all the facts tonight from other speakers and support. So I just want to say, as we, a community, a council, a body of people, as we seek to live our values of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, I hope we can accept this as an opportunity to live our inclusionary values. Be well.
Thank you. No, I think you're good. I don't know if we have anyone else in the room that would like to give a comment. We will move to Zoom.
If you wish to provide a comment, please raise your hand. If attending via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. I'm going to move to the next commenter and see if we can hear that person. It might be a technical issue with our Zoom. Maybe try it. We'll try it maybe this way and see if it works. Mary, we tried to promote you as an attendee. Can you try speaking? Can you try speaking?
I don't know if I should call an audible at this point. I don't know if there's a call-in option of that, but it doesn't work either. So if we went to executive session and came back, could we finish public comment? Is that an option? John, do you want to go before executive session, or do you have someone online?
I'll hang out if it longs it takes.
All right. Okay, so since we're having technical difficulties, sorry to Paul, Mary, and I think Dave. So we'll move to executive session and then come back, and hopefully Zoom will be updated. So executive session is potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101I. It says 20 minutes to start, and council may take action when we return. Good? Awesome. All right, we will be back at, what's 20 minutes from now? 7:22? 7:25? Let's make 7:25. Thank you. Then we will move on to consent calendar.
Okay, I will promote our, well, Mr. Osmer's already, should be able to speak, so you can go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I'm glad you got your audio problem solved. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Okay, my name is Dave Osmer, and I live in Providence Point, which I'm sure you all know is not in the city of Samamish, but we use your roads daily and most often on Southeast 43rd Way. I'm here tonight to comment on the consent calendar item number six, which is the Southeast 43rd Way pavement preservation project. I just have a simple question. What in the name of logic are you acting on this today when sometime later this spring the road is going to get pounded to death by the construction traffic while Issaquah School District builds its precious high school number four right next to your 228th Avenue Southeast? It just doesn't make any sense that new pavement's going to last about six months when they get done with the traffic that's going to be, the heavy traffic that's going to be operating on it during that construction. That's my comment. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll have Mary go next as she's here.
Good evening. My name's Mary Victor. I hope you can see me and hear me now. So I brought a paper map that I had showed to the three council members who were at the council coffee on Saturday at Met Market. I encourage anybody to do those if you can. It's great to be able to talk independently and individually with people. This is a map from 2015, either April or July, and it was done by the city of Samamish GIS staff, Beth Carpenter, who I believe still works for the city, and she's a good GIS person. And the people who did it are, I got it from Jan Byrd, who's our super steward, and there's a lady, Elaine M., who I've learned is Elaine Amakennery. And in 2008 to 2010, she'd started doing backyard wildlife habitat certifications, and then she'd also done a red Sharpie map that I didn't bring with me because I don't have the original of that, but I emailed it. I sent two emails on Sunday and then one today. And what that does is we need to protect wildlife habitat and corridors in the city. I believe it's one of the city council priorities, and if we don't, they will get lost forever. So I had talked with Retuzia Indipuri, Kent Trine, and also Mayor Kaylee Clark from council and was told to write up my asks. So my asks are the following. We really must know and use the information of maps that already exist, particularly for wildlife habitat, corridors, and others. If you see them and use them immediately, then they can apply to developments that are incoming as well as future. Also, to look within the urban forestry management plan, which I believe there's a report on that on the 16th at the planning commission, and then use the information that's available, and then also have a way for the city to take input so someone like Mary Victor doesn't have to go dig up this stuff from Elaine at Jan Byrd's house, and the city doesn't really have wildlife maps. I think anything that we have, either in the comp plan or in records or provided, there needs to be a way to take it in. Also, we have great staff at the city. I know there's a lot of work to do. I don't want to overload them, so there was some suggestions to use some students or partnerships to potentially do this, and compiling the data and recognizing it's really important. And then I put in other things that could be added, but I just really wanted to highlight it. And then tonight, there is a stormwater thing on the agenda for SMAP, which is Stormwater Management Action Plan. There isn't a DAREF plan that we can see as the public, and there's supposed to be something on the 22nd, which is not an event yet, but if we could see that, it would be really good. I'm actually going to be traveling that day, so I'd like to be able to do things remotely, but super important, so thanks for all you do. And we do need to take everything that we have for critical areas, for habitats, and be able to use those now and moving forward. So there's got to be a way to fit it in, and I know that the new website's changing, and I don't know if that'll give more or other potential capabilities to handle. Thank you and for letting me speak.
I will now promote the next online commenter.
Good evening, city council. Appreciate getting Zoom fixed. The comment tonight is a little bit, oh, I forgot to introduce myself, Paul Stickney in Samamish. I sent in a written comment today, won't rehash all of it, but I am curious what the outcomes were of the Issaquah Fall City Road program. I know there was a wide array of costs over four to five years of TIP on that. There was some discussion at public meetings on some issues about it and some potential litigation to deal with aspects of contractors and utility providers, which would just be sort of interesting as to how all that shook out. I'd like to give a heartfelt thanks to all commissioners that have served the last few years. I mostly watch planning and attend planning commission, occasionally human services, but I know they all are very passionate about doing the best for Samamish and really appreciate all of their services. We'll talk about Tent City Four. There's already been a lot of speakers on that that have covered aspects of it tonight. A little bit of chat on the stormwater SMAP coming up. I agree with Mary. It would be good to get a draft of that available to the public and have it come to the council. As far as I know, that's a new thing. I don't think we have a SMAP before, so it would be good to see. And I've got a couple preemptive comments without having seen the draft yet, but what I will say is that stormwater regulations before 1980 were not too much. They didn't even exist before 1969, but fortunately, in our community, only 3,000 homes were built here, 1980 or earlier. In the 1990s up through 2005, where a lot of our houses were built, there was a lot more standards, not near as much as there is now. 2005, they got stricter, but nowhere near as strict as they are now. In 2016, LID and flow control to mimic flow from predeveloped forested conditioned came into play, and that stood the test of time because for five years, ecology did not change those standards. So in my opinion, I hope that the SMAP focuses primarily on retrofitting older standards, and it's my opinion, and I haven't heard of any issues of any stormwater flooding from, you know, development that has used the 2016 standards or from town center since 2011 on. All right, appreciate the chance to speak. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
If there are any other online commenters, please raise your hand. I don't see any other online commenters.
Great, thank you so much, and thanks for getting that fixed. So next, we'll move on to consent calendar.
We also had one more in-person commenter.
Served as a deputy mayor, and I'm speaking on behalf of Samamish friends and Samamish seniors for the Y proposal. You'll be discussing when five out of the seven Human Service Commissioners' recommendation for the 2023 to 2003 24 grand award to support a senior program, something I've been waiting for over 10 years. That's great. We look forward to in-person activities at the lodge at Beaver Lake and intend to back at the council's vote. Volunteers stand ready to work toward program delivery, and will encourage the broad participation of local community organizations such as Samamish Friends, Samamish Seniors, which has been around for many years from the Samamish Friends, and then Samamish Seniors for over almost four years, Eastside Friends of Seniors, faith-based organization, Samamish Library, civic organizations like the Indian American, who we heard from earlier, Chinese Information Service Center, Together Center for Tomorrow, Muslim Association of Puget Sound American Muslim Empowerment Network, Muslim Association of Puget Sound Muslim County Resources Center, Central Cultural Mexicano, Sound Generations, Jewish Family Services, healthcare agencies, community as a whole, and many more. We will encourage the awarded grant to consider the following ideas to build on current activities provided by Samamish seniors, and I began involved with that organization over six months ago, and I liked their work so much, here I am tonight. Work the select group of strategic partners to develop and execute relevant programming and assess impact, and as appropriate, host regular conversations in person or hybrid with local leaders, movie mover shakers, interesting persons with specialties that are relevant to seniors. And I just turned 60. I thought that was the qualification, but apparently we dropped it to 50. Quilting experts, glass blowing, science nuts, computer jocks.
Thank you.
I have a, oh.
Yeah, we're 10 seconds over now.
Oh, I have, I thought I had the five minutes because I'm representing an organization.
No, just the three.
Oh, really?
Yes, we have changed it. Thank you so much.
Oh, wow. I didn't know that. I wish I do.
All right, so I think we're good for public comment? All right. Okay, so now we move on to the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to approve that.
I approve the consent calendar. Second.
All right, move in second. Any questions, discussion? All right, all those in favors?
Can I just ask a quick question? I don't necessarily want to remove the item, but is there any concern about the overlay if there's construction going on? Is that something, Mr. City Manager, you could just take offline and look at so we don't have to add it to the agenda?
Counsel, I'm happy to respond if that's what, well, the council is. I think this is Issaquah's program. This stretch of 43rd is kind of almost outside our bounds. It's just a little piece that is a strange holdover. We're not really sure how we wind up with one half of one section of the road that's surrounded by Issaquah's, but we don't think it makes sense for us to try to maintain that portion when they have a program and they have, they've received a grant. I appreciate the caller's perspective on potential construction at the top of the hill, but to my knowledge, that, that project has not yet been fully approved. And so I think, you know, with all things like this, cities tend to move on what they have, not what might be, so if that helps.
Very much, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. All right, any other questions? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we are good to go on consent calendar. Next, we have presentations, or two proclamations, I guess. So first, we have the National Children's Dental Health Month. Would anyone like to read that one? Or if not, I have it up. All right, Deputy Mayor, thank you. And then the next one is the Random Acts of Kindness. If someone wants to get queued up on that.
This is a proclamation for National Children's Dental Health Month, whereas the future is to a large, to a large, oh, sorry, measure, something on my screen. Depending on the good health of our children and families, and whereas good health can be achieved in part through good dental habits and oral health care learned early and reinforced through life, and whereas good oral health contributes to better nutrition, improved ability to concentrate, and improved school attendance, and whereas the city of Samamish is dedicated to a strong commitment to all children in our community through many early childhood and school programs, and whereas the National Children's Dental Health Month is celebrated each February in order to raise awareness about the importance of good oral health, and whereas in past years, the city, the Center for Pediatric Dentistry at the University of Washington School of Dentistry welcomed children from throughout Washington for free preventive dental care at an event called Give Kids a Smile that included an oral exam, teeth cleaning, x-rays, and fluoride application, and the center hopes to hold such an event this year as well. Now, therefore, the mayor of City of Samamish, Kaylee Clark, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim February 2023 to be National Children's Dental Health Month, and in the city of Samamish, the mayor encourages all citizens to join in this special observance.
Thank you, and I just remembered I have a dentist appointment in the morning, literally, 9:00 AM. I just remembered that. Thank you. All right, Random Acts of Kindness. Would anyone like to read that one? Yeah, Councilmember Stewart?
All right. Random Acts of Kindness Week, February 12th through 18th, 2023. Whereas the city of Samamish recognizes and values the simple acts of kindness performed without prompting a reason, and how these acts can positively impact the performer, the participant, and the onlookers of the good deed, and whereas people of any age can participate in random acts of kindness anytime, anyplace, and for the selfless purpose of spreading goodwill, and whereas by providing random acts of kindness and reaching out to one another, regardless of social or economic status, education, gender, origin, religious belief, age, lifestyle, or abilities, we extend an opportunity for grace, dignity, and acceptance that might otherwise not be offered, and whereas kind individuals can create a more caring community and help to perpetuate genuine acts of kindness within their city, state, and even throughout the world, and whereas we seek to cultivate thoughtful and compassionate residents by teaching the youth to make a difference through random acts of kindness, and whereas Random Acts of Kindness Week is a celebration of simple kindness that encourages people to tap into their own human spirit and share kindness with one another, thereby nourishing and nourishing and strengthening our community. Now therefore, Kayla Clark, Mayor of Samamish, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, does hereby proclaim the week of February 12th through 18th as Random Acts of Kindness Week in the City of Samamish, and asks our residents of our community to join, to recognize and perform random acts of kindness, and to smile while doing so. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so next, I don't think there was an actual slide presentation for this, but the thank you to the outgoing city commissioners. So as we begin the new year, we would like to express our appreciation for the dedicated commissioners who recently completed their terms. With a combined total of over 40 years of service, we would like to thank the following outgoing commissioners for their contributions. So Arts Commission, Claridell Shedd and Whitney Hawker. For the Human Services Commission, Jody Nishiyoka and Nushina Mir. For the Parks Commission, Cheryl Wagner, Melanie Kelsey, and Ms. Dina Ann. And for the Planning Commission, Josh Amato, Thorin Labby, and Jerry Norman. These Samamish residents played a crucial role in shaping the future of our community, and they truly embody the spirit of volunteerism and public service. We welcome new board and commission members starting this month and look forward to building on the great work of all of our outgoing members. So thank you again, everybody, and I think we'll have certificates of appreciation mailed out.
Yeah, actually, thank you, Mayor. The certificates. Certificates were already distributed, and they were dispersed at most of the commission meetings, starting off the, at the, this last month.
Great, yeah, and thank you, staff, for putting all those together, all that extra site work. So thank you, everybody. All right, next up, I think we have our favorite Community Development Director, David Pyle, giving our monthly council project update.
Just a second while I'm elevated to speaker. All right, thank you for your patience. So good evening, Mayor Clark, City Council, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. I'm here tonight to provide you with third monthly update on major planning projects. Over the next few months, there will be many meetings on the Comprehensive Plan, Climate Action Plan, and Housing Action Plan. I've listed the scheduled meetings here, although there could be meetings added or changed as we continue our efforts on these planning efforts. For now, I've listed planned meetings through May. Keep in mind, there is a lot of background work you don't see here, and staff have been very busy on these projects, keeping them on track. For the Comprehensive Plan, we continue to focus on finalizing the vision statement, setting the project scope, building background information on topics such as land use, and beginning review of the comp plan elements, starting with land use and housing. We've been paying specific attention to state, regional, and county conversations. If you haven't had a chance to watch it, we strongly suggest watching last week's February 2nd Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board meeting video. This is by far one of the most, one of the best presentations on some tough regional issues, and included the results of a survey PSRC and Commerce have been working on. Just go to the PSRC website and search under the Board Meeting Video Archive tab. This was a very well-done presentation and is worth your time watching. Upcoming City Council and Planning Commission Comprehensive Plan-related meetings are highlighted in yellow. As you can see, we're approaching a February 14th meeting with the City Council where we'll bring forward a draft vision statement and proposed Comprehensive Plan update scope of work, and we'll be asking the council to then adopt and those by resolution later on March 21st. For the Climate Action Plan, our focus is on development of emissions and VMT, vehicle miles traveled, reduction strategies. We will also be working with the City Council next week at the February 14th meeting to review the current city climate and greenhouse gas emissions goal, where the council will be asked, what changes should be made? At this meeting, we will also be presenting a possible expansion of the Climate Action Plan scope of work to add a community Climate Action Plan component to the work that is in progress. Just a reminder here, at the bottom of the slide, the community baseline profile and the GHG and VMT reduction strategies are due to Commerce in June of 2023 in accordance with grant funding deadlines, so we continue to push those forward to make sure we meet those deadlines. Upcoming City Council and Planning Climate Action Plan, excuse me, Planning Commission Climate Action Plan-related meetings are highlighted here. You can see that the upcoming meeting with the City Council next week, as I described, on goal-setting and on the scope of work adjustment are listed here. We will also be bringing forward the review of the draft vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas reduction strategies on March 2nd to the Planning Commission, where we'll start to, as our consultant says, socialize those. For the Housing Action Plan, our current focus is drafting of a Housing Action Plan that will soon be presented to the Planning Commission and City Council for review and public hearing. Again, a reminder for this one as well, that the city adopted Housing Action Plan is due to Commerce in June of 2023 in accordance with grant funding deadlines. Upcoming City Council and Planning Commission meetings related to Housing Action Plan are highlighted in green. You can see, as described, that the, the March 2nd meeting with the Planning Commission will be where we will first daylight the, the draft Housing Action Plan, and the Planning Commission will have opportunity to review it and provide feedback. With that, that's the update on our current projects or our ongoing planning projects.
All right, we already, we already have one hand. Councilmember Howe.
Hi, David, thank you for the update, and a quick question. I was watching the Planning Commission meeting, and they made some interesting comments, and good comments, I thought, to the visioning statement when it was presented to them. Are we going to see an updated version of that? And when would we see that?
Yeah, we'll be bringing that back next week, and you'll be seeing a, I believe you'll be seeing the, the updated version that the, the consultant has been working on processing all the comments and questions from the Planning Commission and integrating those in. We're bringing it back to you for your review in a workshop setting, and then we'll be following up with finally an adoption by resolution, ideally on March 21st.
Okay, because there was enough in there that the earlier we can get that, and you already know that, the better, so that we can give you constructive commentary at that time.
Yeah, I agree. It's a, it's a fine balance between our ability to turn it around between, you know, short meeting dates that are close together, and, and also giving you the opportunity to have time to review it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments, Council? Awesome. Thank you so much, David.
Thank you.
Yeah, these are great, actually, super helpful. I'm glad we're doing this. All right, so next we are moving on to new business, and we have our interviews for the Planning Commission. I know we have one that is not able to make it. I can read his email if we'd like to do that, but we are going to start with AJ. And we will have one question that I believe you got earlier, and I will read it aloud, and then I will read the email response we got from the one person who can't come, and then we have Karen that will go last, and then I believe after that, we are handing our ballot in like last time to you all, to do a count. Awesome. All righty, okay, so our one question. We have several goals we're trying to accomplish as we view decisions through several lenses such as equity and sustainability. How will you balance land use decisions as they relate to equity while preserving the natural environment? And I believe you have, is it three minutes I think we're doing? All right. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, and this esteemed Council, it's great to be here in front of you. I would like to first introduce myself. My name is Ajay Chakrapani, and I am a resident of Samamish for the last 10 years, and like my wife says, for many, many more decades to come. I am a lifelong student of operations research, and we've always been tasked to find solutions out of competing yet critical factors. We use variables, A, B, C, X, Y, and Z to find the answer to a solution, and then we bring it back and work through it. That's just the mathematical part of the problem. Operations research students are also masters at consensus. That's our X factor. We try to build up on that. Land is a community resource. Equity and sustainability is a community responsibility. And as the Planning Commission, the commissioners have this awesome, have this awesome duty to maximize that land use for the community, either through dwell units and plan for social centers that will enable a thriving and engaged public while growing our economic footprint. And while maximizing all of these things may sound like a pie-in-the-sky plan, they're actually clear ideas on how we can build these things. There have been examples in the past, there have been examples in the current situations in the world where cities have made impacts building these things. I was in New York some time back, and if you travel into New York and you see the amount of activity and see the amount of city centers that have been built where the community comes together, you start to realize how well they have been managing that. I mean, I know New York is a difficult city, but that is a shining example of how we can make that happen, and we can make that happen for Samamish as well. We get to build this through consensus, inviting and encouraging competing ideas, and this irony is not lost on me as I say this, and through possibly hair-pulling exercises. We evaluate it with a single lens. How do we make this a better city 10, 20, 50 years from now for today's toddlers, kids, professionals, and seniors? And the planners are the best people to do this daunting task. How do we keep this a tight community? Use the best of technology, use the best of the data revolution that we have in the middle of a revolution of, of data that we are in, and use resources like the Blue Ma EIS and the alternative one that has been approved. This is my city. It has given me so much, and I would love to return that generosity through my penchant for planning, through my penchant for variables, mathematics, and through my passion for consensus, and my love for this lovely city that is my home, although I have no more hair to pull. Thank you very much.
Thank you, AJ. All right, so I will read, Josh Amato can't make it tonight, so for his email, the answer to your question really depends on the specific goal. What comes to mind are the potential new state mandates in this legislative session and county mandates around housing affordability. This will take a significant amount of time to get right, but I don't believe the real challenge is with protecting or preserving our natural environment, especially, especially since we've made many improvements in this area in recent years. In my view, the real challenge is economics. Creating more housing that is considered equitable necessitates substantially cheaper housing than we currently have, plus other items like transit. In my last meeting as a planning commissioner, we tackled many of those possible methods of achieving these goals, and I provided a significant amount of feedback. Whether the goal is sustainability, more affordable housing, or preserving the natural environment, we will need to think creatively about adjusting land use, pulling many levers, and continually review regulations to ensure they are achieving the right outcomes. Housing equity in a place like Samamish with high land prices, high cost of living, and limited transit will be very tough to do. I think the council and city staff would benefit from hearing from a commissioner who thinks differently about these issues than the majority in place now and is willing to speak up to offer solutions. I am not digmatic on these issues. I look at what we're trying to achieve and try to find the best way to do it. Thank you for consideration, and I apologize for not being able to attend. Sincerely, Josh Amato. All right, and then last up, we have Karen McKnight.
Karen McKnight, I've lived here since 1980 and seen it grown from 3,000 residents to, what, 68,000 now? So, good evening, City Council. Thank you for taking the time to interview us. Your question was big and broad, so I decided to focus, and I want to let you know that I commit to working toward equity and sustainability while preserve, preserving our natural resources. I believe under all is the land, and the way we guide our built and natural environment is through zoning. For the next three minutes, I will focus on my support of implementing transit-oriented development. And why is this? Because it leads to six of what I perceive as very important goals. First is housing affordability and housing choices, because they create housing equity. When we stack residents like we can in a transit center-oriented development, we can make them more affordable. That also creates higher revenue for our city and an opportunity to supply housing for those who are less than 30%, up to less than 80% of AMI. It also gives us a place to have a senior center, and seniors want walkable places, they want shops, they want res, retail, they want to be where it's easy to get around. A second goal of mine is to help create economic health. Services and retail like to be in a central area, which helps their revenue, and it also helps our tax revenue as a city. This lessens the tax bleed that we're experiencing from cities shopping in nearby, from our citizens shopping in nearby cities. More services in our city lessens the after-school traffic congestion. My third goal is opportunity for multimodal transportation. Walking trails, bike lanes, commuter buses equal more equitability so employees can live and work in our city. Lessening traffic congestion takes pressure off our need for more roads and lowers, lowers city expenses and CO2 emissions. My fourth goal is sustainability. Creating transit centers, multi-use development, and multimodal transportation is more sustainable. It creates the opportunity for state-of-the-art surface water management, save space for nature reserves, parks, and more. My other, my fifth goal is to have a community gathering, an event place where culture can be shared and multicultural understandings grow. Maintaining the feel of Samamish happens to be by keeping density in a specific area. My practice is to hold the vision and then dig, dig deep into the details and the research and depend on the expertise of experts who are resources to our city. I appreciate your support. I commit to supporting land use decisions that are key to creating sustainability, equity, and preserving our natural environment. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Karen. All right, Council, if you will fill out your ballot. While they are tabulating, did it say somewhere how long this one, this term will serve until? Three years. Thank you. Thank you. Does that work? Thank you, Councilmember Trean. All right, congratulations, Ajay. Sorry for the lead-up. Thank you so much, Karen, and thank you, Josh Amato. Congratulations, you're in it for three years. Alrighty. Okay, so item number 16. Also, thank you for applying and interviewing. Sorry, I'm so bad at that. Councilmember Howe, you're always supposed to say thank you. You're so good at that. For applying and interviewing.
I thought I had trained you.
I know, you have not, clearly, yeah. My goodness, okay. All right, item number 16, discussion for the recommendation on senior services programming. We have Mike, Rita, and Julie. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. My name is Mike Sugg, Supervising Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. I'm joined by Rita Bod, our Senior Human Services Coordinator, also out of the City Manager's Office, and Julie Varne, our Vice Chair of the Human Services Commission. And Julie is here this evening to deliver the Commission's recommendation on senior services programming at the Beaver Lake Lodge. Many thanks to Julie and the rest of the Commission for their extra time and effort to develop this recommendation. We are truly lucky to have the depth of experience and the professionalism of our volunteers on the Human Services Commission. And with that, I will hand it over to Julie.
Thank you, and good evening. I just wanted to give you, let's see, a little background. There we go. As you know, the city put out an RFP for senior services in December. It was widely distributed. We received two respondents, one from the American Indian Community Services, or IACS, and one from the YMCA in conjunction with the Samamish seniors. We were asked, as a commission, at our January 11th meeting to review both of the proposals. And we had two commissioners who recused themselves from the vote in the discussion because they had been involved with the Samamish seniors in the past. The process we undertook was standard for what we do. We looked at both proposals side by side. We provided a template to the commissioners to take notes as we went through each of the proposals, kind of answer by answer, and compared the two. It was a very robust discussion. In the end, the five voting commissioners voted unanimously to propose to the council and the city to fund the proposal from the IACS. And what I thought I would do tonight is just walk you through why we chose that proposal. And so what I did is I went through and I re-watched the video and I wanted to make sure that I picked up the words that the commissioners used. And so hopefully that will come through in what I discussed with you today. So with regards to the overall response, people, the commissioners thought that the IACS was a very intentional program. It focused on the what, the when, the how. It was described in detail about how the programming would be carried out and that it addressed the physical, mental, and social needs in a programmatic approach to the seniors in this community. The IACS has a wide range of experience in providing this type of programming to seniors. They have existing programs. They've been in Redmond for 25 years, in North Bellevue for eight. And we were provided references from both Redmond and Bellevue, as well as King County. I believe you have received, you received a letter of recommendation from the county. And they were called trusted messengers and intentional, have intentional partnerships. And so that was, that was very strong to the commission. They also called out resourcing. And IACS, both, well, both proposals indicated that they would hire to fulfill some of these services. But IACS called out that they would leverage existing people on their staff, including a resource navigator. And Commissioner Mir, excuse me, was, she called that out a couple times about how a resource navigator is a very key resource for seniors, especially those who are vulnerable and who may not know how to access services. And that, to her, was a very strong piece of the response. They also called out in the IACS response that they already have a network of existing fitness instructors, artists, and other instructors who would be providing this programming. Both proposals called out the networking. They would leverage partnerships with both the Samamish seniors and Samamish friends. IACS also already has existing partnerships in the community with many of the community providers like Maps, the CICS, the JACL, Jewish Family Services, and For Tomorrow. These are partnerships that already exist with IACS. And so, you know, they've already got those relationships going and they would leverage those to get the word out and to, you know, just bring people in. They also mentioned in their response that they would distribute to places like Health Point and local hospitals, the information about these, the service and this programming. They mentioned specifically a booth at the farmer's market. They have social media sites that are up and running already, including a WhatsApp group that they, that they can message to. When it came to the outcomes and feedback, the IACS was very specific about gathering feedback from all of the participants. In fact, one of the parts of the job of the resource navigator and the people they would hire would be to design feedback forms and organize specific focus groups and collate feedback data. So they were very intentional about the information they wanted to get back from participants and that was very strong to the commissioners. Both provided information about using the funds mostly for supplies to provide food and that was a very important part of both responses, but the IACS called out breaking bread together. And they actually have, they had a nice, you know, sample schedule with a menu where they had, you know, diverse foods like a wrap, Asian bowl, or a healthy fiesta lunch. So we thought that they'd put a lot of thought into making sure that the activities and the money was going to go towards a very diverse number of activities. Another thing the Commission talked about was the mental health counselor. That is on staff already and this is something that they already have, so they would get access to that, to the seniors, and that was also very important. I talked about the schedule and the innovative programming. The sample schedule that they provided had a diverse amount of activities, from Tai Chi and stretching to nature walks in the Beaver Lake Preserve. They had a variety of other activities like knitting, board games, chess. They talked, I talked about the foods already. And then they also talked about opening with a welcoming tea that would recognize different cultures and different tea ceremonies. And we thought that that was very welcoming and very culturally aware and would meet the diverse needs of the group. One other thing that I saw too, as I was going through this proposal again today, is that they called out that they would have an annual health fair for the seniors and, you know, provide, bringing information. And that is a very big part of what they talked about, informational workshops, resources, and addressing needs. So it's not just about programming and, you know, a place to gather, but it's about meeting the needs of seniors in our community. So in conclusion, the Commission really thought that the IACS proposal took a holistic approach to the physical, mental, social well-being of our diverse Samamish seniors. I'd also want to mention too that the IACS has been a trusted provider of services to the city of Samamish for years and they have met or exceeded their goals. It's clear that they have the community of seniors in mind and that is why they were unanimously chosen by the five voting commissioners. Questions?
All right, Council, thank you so much, Julie. Councilmember Howe?
Thank you for the presentation. I too watched the Commissioners' meeting, which was very helpful and instructive to go through that. I too shared the same conclusions that I think you came to as well, certainly based on the proposals and the reactions of the commissioners and the thoughtful questions, which I so appreciated. I also wanted to state for the record that no one from the Y contacted me about putting my name on that proposal.
Okay, thank you.
And so I was deeply concerned, actually, to see that there. But it also indicated to me that there was a lack of oversight and a lack of communication that was unnecessary. So that, you know, was kind of a red flag for me, I guess. The other thing I'll mention is that some folks have said, gee, $50,000, food, should we be doing that? Well, food is more than food, right? Food is connection, food is bringing people together for a reason. When you want to get somebody to a meeting, you offer a Danish. I mean, if you have food, you pull people together and that's their excuse, maybe to show up when maybe they wouldn't have. So it's not so much that you are filling a calorie count, it's actually a human soul feeder, I think. And I would assume too that you are also taking the point of view that as you get feedback, this works, this doesn't. Could you fix this? Could we adjust that? Of course, that's an absorption process that was also detailed, that you, that, you know, there was going to be frequent opportunity to provide that feedback, but needs to be responded to very quickly. So the other thing I would just remind those that are concerned is that this is for a year, it's not forever, and it's also an opportunity to figure out, does this work? Because we're giving up something. We're giving up revenue by giving over Beaver Lake Lodge. I want to make sure we get a good, better-than exchange for it. So I appreciate your service on this, Commission, and I appreciate your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you to the Human Services Commission. You guys always do such a thorough job. My question might be for staff or the City Manager, which is, while I do agree with Councilmember Howe, that if you want to get someone to a meeting, offer them free food, I do wonder though if, you know, more than half the budget towards food is the right balance. And so I'm wondering, in the contract, is it really spelled out that that's what it will be or will it be more of a, of an ongoing, you know, kind of rolling thing? Because I guess I would like to see potentially more of the resources spent towards program and either extending, you know, the hours or the days or something like that if possible as opposed to on the food, only because I'm not sure that, at least in our community, that, you know, that full meals is maybe necessarily the highest priority in that regard. But otherwise, I really do appreciate and agree with your recommendation.
So, Councilwoman Stewart, so they have allocated that amount for food. IACS have been doing this for many years and they fully admit that a lot of their budget is towards food. However, they find that providing a healthy lunch and to break bread is a great way to connect folks. And they're also leveraging a lot of their own resources to bring in that we're not paying for. So for instance, they have a mental health coordinator that will be coming in, a resource navigator, a senior services lead. So yes, I mean, they've done this in many different places and yes, it does look like a lot, but they truly believe that that brings people in and connects people, so yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to say that I do fully support the recommendation from the Commission to select IACS. I really appreciated how thoughtfully written the RFP was and it was really good to see a sample calendar and to see that transportation was considered. And it was also good to see that they have successfully partnered with Redmond and Bellevue in the past. I did want to mention that Council did receive a letter from the King County Human Services, Department of Adult Services, who unprompted, you know, sent us a letter in support of IACS. I did want to mention as well that, you know, I would be remiss, actually, if I didn't mention this. We received a comment earlier today regarding the, this person's opinion and the differences in the services the Y would provide versus IACS, particularly pointing out that the reputation that the Y has as being able to provide cross-culturally and the question whether or not IACS would be able to do that because they are an ethnic group. And I, when I read, I was actually kind of surprised. I found that a little discriminatory, to say the least, because we don't, we don't expect the Y to prove that they can provide those services, but yet we expect to, we want IACS to prove that they can provide those services, which, you know, is discriminatory. We don't expect that, you know, the Y. So I just, you know, I'm Chinese. I fully trust that IACS will provide relevant programming for the Chinese community. And so I just wanted to say that. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for sharing that. Councilmember Nupure? Oh, yeah, you go, yeah. If you turn your mic on.
Turn my mic on. I move that the council authorize the City Manager to enter into a contract with IACS to provide senior services for the city of Samamish.
Second? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are these just lingering hands?
No, I will just make a statement.
Yeah, please.
To speak to my motion. I have seen firsthand the work that IACS has done in our community and I think, actually, before I go there, I just want to thank Deputy Mayor Lamb for bringing up that feedback and question. I think IACS has answered a lot of questions, just proving. And I think, you know, as we, the city is 44% people are born outside of this country and it has been, they really had to prove that they belong here and I think that goes so much against what we are trying to do as a council, to say that our city is welcoming and it, so it's not just for people, it's also for organizations and companies and entrepreneurs, you know. So I really commend, first of all, IACS for applying and they've been here a long time. And I think not only is it going to get, you know, programming for seniors, I know, Commissioner, you talked about the health, the health checkups, senior health checkups. My kids used to volunteer there when they had the health checkups. So it's not only an opportunity for our seniors, it's also an opportunity for our whole community to get involved. And I am extremely excited about the prospect. I think the lead who is going to be running the program has lived in Samamish for many, many years. Our kids have grown up here. And so I really look forward to seeing our city benefit from the programming that IACS will be bringing.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so I want to thank both, you know, the YMCA and for submitting, but I do also want to call out that when the IWCS responded the last time we asked for something, this same question came up was, well, because you are, you know, an Indian-based organization, can you really serve more people? And I think we need to just, yeah, that just needs to stop. They have proven again and again and again through all of the services that they provide to communities all across our county that they are more than capable, more than willing, and do an outstanding job. So I want to thank them for their prior service to our community and stepping up and helping out when we had a mental health crisis previously and providing a wide array of services to help address that. And I'm excited to see them come and help our seniors, so thank you.
All right, I think it's been moved and seconded. Is that correct? All right, I think it's been moved and seconded. Is that correct? All right, so all those in favor to approve the Indian-American Community Services for our senior services programming, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, 7-0. Congratulations. I wish Lolita was still here. Thank you, everybody. All right, so next up, we do have our, I almost called it international report, informational report on Stormwater Management Action Plan with Audrey, Stephanie, Toby, and GeoSynTech.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. For the record, Audrey Sarsky, Interim Public Works Director. And this evening, our Stormwater Division will present an informational report on Stormwater Management Action Plan, often referred to as SMAP or SMAP. This is the third component of a broader planning requirement with the city's stormwater permit with the Department of Ecology. And as noted in the Agenda Bill, the first two components of this permit requirement were completed by the city already through our retrofit strategy in 2021 and will be implemented through our new retrofit program in our newly adopted Stormwater Capital Improvement Plan. So looking forward to completing those. GeoSynTech Consultants has assisted the city with the development of this third component, the Stormwater Management Action Plan. And this evening, Christian Nielsen of GeoSynTech will be presenting, along with Toby Canon, the city's Senior Stormwater Engineer, Stephanie Sullivan, Senior Stormwater Program Manager, and myself will be available for questions. With that, I will turn it over to you, Toby, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Okay. I'm going to trust that I have successfully shared, and you can hear me. With that, we will get rolling. First, thank you, Council and Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Audrey for introduction. Public Works is nearly complete with the Stormwater Management Action Plan here. And we are here to offer, as Audrey said, a progress report. This is our second presentation, if you know. We introduced the Stormwater Management Action Plan to Council last October 28th. I did want to cover some real quick background. First, as Audrey noted, this is an NPDES municipal stormwater permit coverage requirement. And we are one of many communities that are going through this new planning exercise. And obviously, this is aimed at improving receiving water quality and habitat. Secondly, this has been a city priority for a couple of years. Council's future adoption of the final SMAP report is the last step. With that, we will wrap up this 2022 work plan item. Very briefly, the SMAP, as Audrey said, has three components identified here. We did complete the receiving water ID and prioritization last year. And that brings us to the last part of the SMAP planning process, which is, you know, preparing our final Stormwater Management Action Plan report. Looking at this, we've got a busy month ahead of us. After tonight's meeting, we've arranged for a virtual public open house on February 22nd. And we will also be receiving public comments from the Council and public after we post a draft plan on February 17th. I do want to note that this is technically not an official public meeting or comment period. This is really outreach effort that's kind of in keeping with the city's practice of collecting feedback for any kind of plan or program that gets advanced. There's a few other general points I wanted to mention as well. First, the SMAP relies heavily on our Council-adopted retrofit strategy. Secondly, we have taken a lot of pains to try to meet ecology expectations along the way. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge a lot of our neighboring communities that have reached out to us, you know, to help decipher permit language and just bounce ideas. It's been very helpful, and we're confident we're on the right track here. And the third point I want to make is that the SMAP process is ultimately a planning exercise. The current permit requirements, which extend through 2024, effectively end with the planning stage. You'll note that our plan is going beyond that, and it'll recommend certain construction projects, including some that are included in the capital facility plan, or capital improvement plan, rather. We are doing this because ecology, we can anticipate, will expand the SMAP requirements with their next permit. And we do want to be positioned to respond to that quickly and effectively. With that, I want to turn things over to Christian to discuss some of the details of our SMAP report.
Thank you, Toby. As Toby mentioned, there are three tiers to the SMAP planning process. And really, these are dictated by the language of the stormwater permit through ecology. It starts with an assessment of receiving waters and looking at all the data that's available. And then looking at all of the basins within the city and prioritizing ones that could benefit the most from additional effort for stormwater projects. And then the final step is selection of a high-priority catchment. At the conclusion of the receiving water prioritization step, Laughing Jacobs Basin was selected as the high-priority basin. And then within that, we went through an additional prioritization process where we identified a subcatchment of Laughing Jacobs Basin as the focus of the Stormwater Management Action Plan. And it's circled here on this map. It's a tributary of Laughing Jacobs Lake. This is near the Kohani neighborhood. And it's the site of Queens Bog, which is a high-value wetland within the city of Sumamish. This area was identified as a high-community value area through the Laughing Jacobs Basin Plan. And it follows that it also has a lot of resources that can benefit from stormwater improvements. So the next slide shows a blow-up of that area. It's about a 324-acre basin. As you can see here, it's the northern end of Kohani. And Challenger Elementary School is within this catchment as well. The first step that we looked at once this high-priority catchment was identified was to see where stormwater facility retrofits could be located. And the first screening criteria that we looked at was property ownership. We wanted to identify projects that could be placed on public property to minimize any other issues with private property owners. So we first looked at all the parcels that were publicly owned or quasi-publicly owned. And then in the next slide, we've identified candidate project sites. Seventeen candidate project sites were initially identified. And we went through a series of screening processes, looking at feasibility, potential for benefits of a stormwater project. And we arrived at a list of five candidate sites. And so these are shown in green here on this map. And so these five candidate sites, these are facility retrofits or new stormwater projects that would be included in our report to ecology for a potential project that could benefit the receiving water in this basin. So here's a list of those potential priority projects. We have five sites identified. And then we have an additional site in the report just to note that there is another parallel planning process going on with the Kohani Park Master Plan. And there might be a potential project there. The ones that we took forward to conceptual design included three bioretention basins and two stormwater vault retrofit sites. Bioretention Basin, you might be familiar with, is a green planter that has high-infiltrating soils below it. And this can improve water quality by filtering stormwater through the plants and through these soils and then discharge a reduced amount of stormwater that has fewer pollutants and is better for receiving waters. And a stormwater vault retrofit is a little bit similar, but it's a more engineered system that is located in a vault, in a stormwater vault below the surface. One of these projects is already on the city's CIP, and that's the Kohani Park South project. The remaining projects are not in the CIP. And as Toby mentioned earlier, this is a planning exercise. So in order for it to get into the CIP, there would be additional processes to do so. So this is the list of sites that we've identified that would be potential projects that could be assessed at a future date for implementation.
Thanks, Christian. That's a, you know, in a nutshell, is a summary of the retrofit element of the SMAP report. There really are two additional elements that we're expected to cover. The first is land management and development strategies. This SMAP process obviously can't change our development code or comp plan or zoning. Land use, you know, it's its own thing. So this type of response is off the table. We did look at building on current protections that we've listed here. These current measures really do a, really a pretty impressive job at protecting receiving waters. Redeveloping any property in that 324-acre catchment area, it's going to require much more effective drainage improvements than currently exist. And we also considered how much of the 324-acre catchment might be subject to redevelopment. This area is obviously fully built out with, you know, desirable housing within Kohani. And it's really quite unlikely that much of any of this will be replaced long-term. So the redevelopment potential is considered to be low. So doing some simple math, we realize that even the very best strategy, you know, the very best water quality improvement is going to have a pretty minor impact within the catchment, simply because it's going to be applied to such a small area. So we concluded, really, that the, you know, the value of implementing new land management and development strategies is limited, particularly when it's compared with a much higher value delivered by some of the retrofit measures. And our SMAP obviously reflects that. And on to the final strategy here. These are specialized management strategies. The permit guidance describes this as targeted or customized implementation of stormwater management actions. That's a fancy way of saying that these are, you know, specific strategies geared toward a unique property use that can benefit from added inspections or maintenance or other programs. We had a pretty tough time applying this strategy to our catchment areas, simply because we've got a suburban residential area that really doesn't have, offer any unique challenges in that respect. We did outline the extensive existing programs within Sumamish that might be considered as specialized management strategy. And really, the only additional opportunity that we had thought might be applicable to our catchment is expanding outreach to area residents and offering additional sign-ins and other kind of in-place educational opportunities. Really, one challenge with these efforts, too, is that it's really difficult to establish any kind of link between, you know, taking these actions and then a benefit on water quality. It's, you know, you can't measure water quality based on the number of signs you put out there. It's, you know, it's a tough one to make a link there. But given the nature of our catchment area, this strategy does play a minor role in the SMAP. And again, our report is, you know, will be compiled to reflect that. So I'd like to end with a couple of key milestones as we approach our submittal to ecology. Again, we will have a link on the city's activity calendar coming up. And it will steer residents to the public discussion on February 22nd. And we will also provide a link to the draft report when that's available. And that's coming up on February 17th. Before we sign off, I did want to thank Lisa Weary, who is the city's permit coordinator, does all things NPDES in our stormwater group. And she has been tireless in answering my questions and doing so quickly and with grace. So kudos for Lisa tonight. If you do have any questions, we'll try to get them answered tonight or follow up later if necessary. With that, I think I will turn things back over to Audrey.
Thank you, Toby. And I'm actually going to turn things back to the mayor. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Christian and Toby. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you. I see the report, when it comes back, to be finalized to council. Will be part of a consent agenda item. And I just wonder, because the more I learn about stormwater, the more I realize how little I know. And so what I'm hoping is that on that night, that it may be open for discussion because it's a report I'd like to review. I hope we'll get it a little bit ahead of time before our council meeting, so we can review it so that we have a chance to ask questions if that, if that would, if that comes up. And then I also see there's a webinar that's going to be on the 15th. Do we know what time that's going to be? Because, and will it be recorded and available to watch afterwards? Because I would really, I'd like to be part of it, but I know it won't be available on that day. So I'd like to hear what the public feedback is for the webinar. So I'd kind of like to hear about that and see if there's a possibility on our March council meeting, March 7th, that we would have an opportunity to maybe ask some questions about the report before we finalize it. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell, thank you for bringing that up. The February 15th meeting is the one that got bumped to the 22nd due to some potential scheduling conflicts. So there is one and only one meeting, and that is the 22nd. We do anticipate getting the report in draft form circulated, as I noted, on the 17th. Then there's a 10-day period for which we can accept comments, you know, from public as well as council. We'd anticipate those questions, you know, those which we don't have time necessarily, that aren't appropriate for inclusion into the final report. We anticipate, you know, compiling answers, questions and answers, and making those available on the web. And, you know, but the expectation, obviously, is that we do have a pretty narrow window after which, you know, we can't get the report incorporated into the Agenda Bill. So I think Stephanie and I discussed some of those dates earlier, and we're looking at, I think, March 2nd for the latest, latest draft update.
So when the draft report comes out on the 17th, then we have 10 days from then to submit any queries or questions?
Correct.
Okay.
And if I could just add to that, we could certainly be more than happy to answer any questions and present any changes from the draft to the final report as part of our, the meeting, I think it's on the 7th, for, before we ask council to adopt the final report. As mentioned before, this was the third part in a series. So a majority of the outreach consisted of, occurred with the retrofit strategy. We also recently completed the Laughing Jacobs Basin Plan. So there was quite a bit of outreach that went into that regarding stormwater and water quality.
Okay.
One other item I'd note, too, is that we received an inquiry from Kirkland today, wondering, hey, do you guys have a draft SMAP report wrapped up yet? And this is kind of a broadcast email to, I think, 10 different eastside and regional communities. And not one community has their draft report finalized. So we are in good company.
Okay, so I have that 10-day window to submit my questions and queries and to learn all things about SMAP. And, okay, thank you. I will do that because I just feel like, and the report that you attached, the retrofit strategy and guidance document, is such interesting reading. And I feel like I need to read it over and over and over again before I even begin to understand the subject. And the same with the SMAP. So the more time that I have to review this material, because it's one of those core issues, as you guys know, land use and then stormwater management is such a crucial part of running a city. And I want to fully understand what this is and when we approve and adopt a report and a plan that I have some concept of what we're approving and have an understanding of where it fits in the overall management of our city. And so, yeah, so I will, I will be waiting on the 17th to read your SMAP.
Thank you.
Yeah, and like Audrey mentioned, we can definitely pull it from consent, too, if we want another presentation under unfinished business. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just kind of adding on to that, and I think, Toby, you kind of touched on it. The questions that you get, if we can make sure we, you know, as far in advance as possible, can get that list of questions and answers, so we can go through that as well. We'll try to, you know, do it on consent if possible. But definitely, having not seen a draft of it yet, you know, be prepared. Thanks.
All right.
If I could add just one, oh, I'm so sorry.
No, 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 you go, girl.
Just one more thing, too, just, you know, as with any plan that's adopted, we'll take the projects recommended in those plan, and we'll roll them into our consideration for our capital improvement plan. That's something that's on the Stormwater Division's work plan this year, is to update that. It'll be a light update. We did a lot of work last year to really make improvements on our plan. So these projects, it would be recommended, if this particular SMAP is adopted by council, those projects would then queue into our 24 to 2029 capital improvement plan update. So there'll be lots of opportunities to discuss all these projects in future meetings as well.
Great. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Hi, Audrey. Just a quick question. Will there be costs associated with each of the different projects in the plan?
I have to defer to Toby, but I believe we did some preliminary cost estimates for five projects.
Yeah. Yeah. And those, to this point, the one that is in the CIP, you know, those costs are consistent, generally, in keeping with those numbers, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing any other questions. So, yeah, we look forward to hearing from you all soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Great. All right. So last order of new business is our discussion on Tent City 4 ordinance. So David, or Carrie, or Scott, I'm not sure who I'm handing it to first, if anybody, on the rules side.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I've asked David Pyle, Community Development Director, to kick this off, just to give a little bit of context, and then he'll turn it back over to you for further discussion.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, David Pyle, Community Development Department. With me tonight, I have Sam Dunlap, one of our planners in our department, as well as Avril Beatty, who is our current planning manager. Sam and Avril worked on the Tent City 4 permit that is currently in place and where they are located over at the Mary Queen of Peace Church, just right down the way here. So we received information from the city council that they wanted to add a emergency ordinance for consideration to extend the duration of stay at the Mary Queen of Peace site to a date certain. We put in there, put in an emergency, draft emergency ordinance in the agenda packet tonight that includes a placeholder date. We included April 7th. I can go into some detail about how we ended on that date. But our understanding is that the code, the city's code, which was put in place some number of years ago, includes a permit process that is a little atypical to the rest of our code. It is not, it's a type 1 permit process, which is not administrative. It's a ministerial permit, which means that it's something that is issued at the staff level. It's not appealable locally. And it is a little different because it requires that there's a public comment period associated with the notice of application. So you heard tonight from a member of the Arbor School who indicated that they had hired a security guard based on a date that was included in a public notice that went out. That was the notice of application. And in that application, there was an estimated date when the camp would occupy the Mary Queen of Peace site. Through the permit process, sometimes things take a little bit longer, so it took about a week longer to process. So they actually didn't move in until about a week after the original estimated date. The permit that was issued did include the actual dates, and those are something that could have been pulled by public record. We don't actually have a notice of decision on that, so nobody was notified that the decision was made, as it's a type 1 ministerial permit. So I just wanted to clarify that point that was made by that commenter this evening. So our permit was submitted and reviewed. The permit requirements were met. The permit was issued, and the date was set when the camp could move in and when the camp would be required to leave. There is a four-week, consecutive, four consecutive week maximum listed in the city's code. And our understanding is that there is no, or there, at that point in time, had not been a location secured, and to date still is not secured. They're working on that. And we were asked by council to add, for this evening's council agenda, a consideration of emergency declaration and extension of that stay that would be putting in place a interim zoning control, which is allowed by state law, to allow for an extension of that duration up to a date to be established by the city council. So one thing to keep in mind is that if the council was to declare an emergency, that requires a public hearing be held 60 days, no less than 60 days, or no more than 60 days from the date of passing of the emergency ordinance. So if you start to do the math and look at the number of days, that would be April 8th, would be when a public hearing would be required, which would be 60 days from tonight. So if you were to set the date, if council does choose to pass an emergency, and you were to set a date certain, if you were to set that as April 7th, then you would not have to go through the process of setting and holding a public hearing. If you were to extend it beyond that date, you would need to make sure to add a public hearing to a future agenda item to ensure that the public had adequate opportunity to provide comment as required by state law. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor. We do have Sam Dunlap and Avril Beatty here that can answer any questions about the city's permit process, and we'd be happy to talk about our code requirements or anything the council has questions on. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, David. And I know this was kind of a 11th-hour ad for the draft ordinance part of it yesterday. So thank you for putting something together. I know Councilmember Stewart has been working on some things, so at least if we can get, I don't know if we have an update on where we are. I know we got some in public comment as well, but I can pass it to you first.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And just for the public, we did get some great updates in email, so I will share, share some of those details so everyone has it. I just want to say that in a world that can feel increasingly divided, I think tonight we're reminded that we're united by our humanity. And I remain forever hopeful when I see that this council and past councils have always been unanimously united in our support of Tent City 4 and making sure that we work hard to keep all of our residents safe, because public safety is obviously, from a government perspective, our number one priority. So just to give a quick rundown of, you know, what's happening is that the folks from Tent City 4, and as we heard, multiple congregations down in Issaquah, as well as the Issaquah permitting staff and their human services departments, are all working as quickly as possible to secure a location down in Issaquah, to get the paperwork all done, so that we can help our neighbors move to Issaquah and settle in there safely. In terms of the emergency, as you can see on the screen, it is winter here. And as we know, even today, winter in Seattle, in the Seattle area, brings a whole range of weather, right? Today, I think we had sun, partly cloudy. We had strong winds for a period of time, sideways rain. I may have even heard some hail, I don't know, at my house, but it is, it is, it is not safe. It's not safe to necessarily even be moving, let alone moving to a location that does not have adequate facilities. So I think that's the gist of the update. I don't know if there are questions that I or our staff can answer, but I'm happy to try to provide information, if I have any more, from, from all the parties. And I want to thank everybody who's been leaning in and helping out with this. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Howe?
I think, first of all, what I want to make sure that is clear is that there are no bad guys here. So we heard a public statement from the owner of a school, who is, who is a warrior for their school. They are trying to create a safe atmosphere for the infants and young children and their staff, and they are operating out of fear when they have a security guard. Now, I'm not going to tell them they're wrong, because they have every right to that fear that's theirs. They, that, you know, you can't tell a young parent everything's going to be okay when they are terrified that it's not going to be okay. So the real thing here is that the expense is $550 a day for a security guard to, to give them that sense of security. Whether they, you know, whether it's a real fear or, you know, a real monster or not, doesn't matter. That's what they feel they have to spend. And they've lost families, so they've lost income. And they have, they have a right to feel respected and safe here as well as, as the rest of the community. So, you know, that's, that's one rock. And then the other hard place is Pam is right about, nobody thinks that I-90 is an awesome spot. The, the thing I struggle with is that this is an ongoing problem. I don't understand why there's not a directory of places that says, you know, these are the different spots around the city that are open and that have a more easy and transparent process. Me and I have gone ahead and called Sarah Perry and said, Sarah, you guys in King County, you've got property with the La Quinta that was just purchased in Kirkland. Can we set up shop in the parking lot there? And they can't move fast enough. So that's the rock, the hard place, and the impossibility. So we've got a conundrum. It is, it can be worked out. What I would, what I would love to do, to be honest with you, is to have all parties in the same room at the same time and talking about a solution together. What if, what if the, the folks that are here today from the church volunteered to be the security guards at the school, so that there was no expense? Okay. Maybe that's nutty. Maybe it's not. You know, what if we had homes that we could open up for a period of time? What if we could? What if we could find another place there? Because I feel late to the party, you know, in terms of trying to play catch-up and figuring out where things are at. The way the school feels is that you guys have known forever. What the heck? You know, you knew you had to move. So this, this should have been worked out a long time ago. And that works in the, in certain corporate world, that it does, but it really doesn't in the nonprofit sector, and it really doesn't when you're trying to do something like moving a tent city. And I fully appreciate that. So I think we are where we are. We have a group of individuals who need a place to stay for a period of time. Is there any other permitting that would be possible that buys us a little more time, but doesn't save the school any money? But is this the very best option for us if we were to extend? Is there no better option? Just, I'm just asking.
So there is no other option for temporary homeless encampment use in the city's development code?
Okay.
That would allow for a camp to be located in the city. There, there needs to be an emergency declared, and there needs to be an extension granted as an interim zoning control if the council wishes the camp to remain at that site.
Okay. So the risks are to the city, if I understand it, Carrie, please help me with this, is that being able to actually declare an emergency, from the school's point of view, they're saying, what emergency? This is a planning error. But there might be a different kind of opportunity to say that there is a homelessness crisis in King County, and we can apply towards that. Arguably, we'd still be in a risky position. Is that correct or not?
I just want to explain that based on the record before the council, the testimony that you've heard, not just during tonight's meeting, but leading up to tonight's meeting, in reference to this entire conversation, seems to have created the record needed to establish an emergency, if that's the council's discretion.
Okay.
So council has wide authority when it comes to land use and local control for land use-related decisions. So with that, I would say that the draft ordinance before you has been specifically crafted in a way that tries to reflect the record that's before the council.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's really helpful. And so the other kind of sticking point that I want to just bring up for discussion is date certain. So yes, Issaquah is working on it, but it's a partner that we have no control over and have no authority over. So we, we are optimistic that they can maybe get something done, but, you know, they can't guarantee that. So what happens on April 8th, when, you know, we're, we're still stuck? You know, what, what I'm wondering, you know, could it happen that folks have to end up on I-90 anyway and then move to the Issaquah location, provided it actually comes through? I'm just positing that as a question. So as you can probably tell from my commentary, I'm very much on the fence. I have not made up my mind on this, because I'm very much torn on how best to proceed to be protective of all the individuals that are a party to this.
So David, I'm not sure if you know how long, because I know this is, they don't have this written down as like a, an ordinance or any sort of special permit process, like for a timeline. Is that correct? Issaquah, sorry.
Yeah. We've reached out to the city of Issaquah on our end, and we've also searched all the permit records, and we have not seen any indication that there has been a formal submittal made to the city of Issaquah. We're also not aware of what their permit process is. It seems they have a special event permit that they use. That's the best we could pull out. We, we do have phone calls into their planning manager there, and our planning manager, Avril, I don't know if you want to speak to that, has been playing phone tag with, with their planning manager. So they've been trying to connect Avril.
Hi, Avril Beatty, current planning and planning manager with the Department of Community Development. As David mentioned, I've been playing phone tag with Christian Geitz, the planning manager in Issaquah. However, reading through their municipal code and looking at the permit history for the property in Issaquah that's been mentioned, that the Tent City 4 might be moving to. It's, it's a special event permit in the history records, and it appears that it's an administrative-type permit. I can't guarantee that, but that's what it appears to be. So it, there doesn't appear to be noticing or outreach requirements as part of that. And so generally, those sort of permits, like over jurisdictions, can generally be processed in two to four weeks. So generalization, that's my caveat. However, it shouldn't, I can anticipate it being a lengthy review process, so I hope that helps.
Thank you, Avril. It does. So before I go back to Councilmember Stewart, I think we have either a couple options is approving this draft ordinance as it lies. We do have the option to, I guess, have it come back and give whomever a week of opportunity to either comment or to see if we get any more breakthrough with Issaquah, or can get like a yes for sure. I know there's supposed to be some sort of meeting tonight before a, like a decision before a permit can be filed for in Issaquah. So a couple of different options. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. I just want to thank you to the staff for the outreach it is, as I understand, some sort of a special use or special event permit. I guess I just want to kind of throw out there that we also have an option of approving this tonight and setting a public hearing to give everyone the appropriate notice and the appropriate opportunity to come and provide that input. But by approving something, and then after that public hearing, we can always modify, right? So that's kind of the, the point of that, is that you can have a public hearing, and then based on that input, you can change your emergency ordinance accordingly, if so desired. But by approving it tonight, what we, what we do, right, so the, again, so that the public is aware, the current permit expires on February 18, which, assuming that, you know, by the time we get out of here, it's effectively the 8th, so that's 10 days. As I understand it, it's about a seven-day process to be able to coordinate a move. And so in order for the Tent City 4 folks to either plan or unplan a move, they, they need a week at least to be able to plan accordingly. So by, by providing an emergency extension tonight, given, given the weather and given the conditions where they would have to go if we didn't, and the risk to human life, we can grant this extension, and we can set a date for a public hearing to allow whomever might have concerns or questions to come in and do that. And I feel like that might be sort of that middle of the road, that middle ground in between your rock, your hard place, and your impossibility. between your rock, your hard place, and your impossibility. We can find this happy place in the middle of giving folks a little bit more time, giving us time to get more information from the various churches and the city of Issaquah. And everybody has a little bit of breathing space, so we don't put people in harm's way. So that would be something that I would hope the, the council can consider. And I don't know if there are more questions. Let me know, Mayor, because if not, I'd love to make a motion, but I want everyone to have a chance to get their questions answered.
We do have Councilmember Howell with a hand.
So a hearing is not the same thing as bringing parties together to have a discussion. Part of the reason why there is this concern by Montessori School, they don't know their neighbor. They think they do. They're pretty sure they do. So I think that there's an opportunity, and a week would give us an opportunity for the neighbors to actually get together. By all the neighbors, I mean like Mary Queen of Peace, Tent City Four, Montessori School staff, maybe a couple of parents to just sit down and just look at each other across the room and around a round table to just, to, to see if there's a compromise or an opportunity so that they can relax. If they knew, for example, that you were starting the packing up process now-ish, you know, or in eight days or 20 days, then they might decide, you know, "I don't need to have that guard for as long as I thought." Or maybe I only need the guard in the morning to check the property, to make sure it's clear of any kind of debris or whatever. And maybe it's just another smaller period in the evening. I'm, I am trying to find a different way to approach this that gives, frankly, this council some breathing room as well. And I think a week would give us that. You're not going to stop, you're not going to stop moving full speed ahead to try to find that alternate location. I mean, I know you're motivated to try to do that as rapidly as possible. It's not going to stop Issaquah either. And I also, until we find out what the vote was tonight, I think we're operating a little bit in the dark. I'm sure it was a, a good result. I, I feel confident of that. I don't have it in my hand. So I, I would like to revisit this next week. In fact, I move that we revisit this topic next week and propose this specific ordinance, which I think is a piece of art, next, on the 14th of February.
I second that.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. I know Councilmember Stewart, I believe you also wanted to make a motion before...
I did.
Councilmember Howell.
Well, but you should, you should address the motion on the table first and deliberate that.
Yeah, okay. So I, I assume it's not an amendment, it is a different motion?
Oh, yes, very much so.
All right, so the current motion on the floor is taking this draft and voting on it in one week. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Can we have a discussion?
Please do.
I do appreciate Councilmember Howell, and I actually am impressed with her facilitation capabilities. Passing the emergency ordinance tonight does not preclude a roundtable discussion over the next week or the next several weeks. But it does prevent the Tent City Four people from having to move full steam ahead on finding their next location and packing up to move out to a location that is dangerous for them all at the same time, only to potentially then have to unpack. And it's not even just packing, they have to rent trucks, they have fencing that they either have to extend or not extend. So there are a lot of factors that go into this. And I do think sitting down and getting people together is, is a wonderful idea. And I, I also just don't think that we have to necessarily wait. I think we can, I think we can do an and. I think we can pass this tonight and have those discussions and have a public hearing, which gives everybody notice and more opportunity to come and speak and be heard. I think one of our speakers tonight said, "We need to listen with care and compassion and act with equity and empathy." And that was really striking to me. And so I, I, I think in that spirit of trying to find a solution that will give everybody their, their breathing space, we can do all of those things. And this date on this ordinance can be amended and changed later if need be to make it sooner or later, whatever we, whatever we need to do to find a positive outcome for everyone. So that, that would be my hope. Thank you.
Councilmember Howell, are you speaking to your motion?
No.
Councilmember Trine?
A quick question of clarification from David Pyle or staff is, what's the consequences of one week? I mean, do, are they really loading up their trucks and moving to Beverly Hills?
I, I can't speak to that. That would have to be asked of the, the camp members. I don't know if there's anyone here that could answer that question, but, you know, they're, I, I would agree with the fact that there is a process to break down a camp and move it. I don't know how long that takes, as, as I have not had to do that, so I could not represent that.
Can I break the third plane and have Steve answer that question? Is that possible?
That's always council's right to take input from the, from the audience.
Yeah. Yes, Steve, do you mind? There's a mic right up here, sorry.
So our moving process would begin tomorrow.
Apologies. If you wouldn't mind, there's a button right at the bottom of that. If you press that, that'll turn the little, it'll go right at the top.
Should be red or green?
Green. Green.
So the moving process, if, if we can't get the extension...
Apologies, Steve, would you...
If we cannot get the extension tonight...
Would you introduce yourself as you start, please?
Yes, my name is Steve Pert. I'm the camp advisor with Tent City Four, and we're currently at Mary Queen of Peace in Sammamish. My apologies. If we cannot get the extension granted tonight, the moving process will start tomorrow by lining up trucks and starting the logistics of getting moved. And we have always been open to a roundtable discussion with Arbor School. We've suggested it, we've tried to get that set up, and it's never happened, just to put that out there. I don't think that that will happen. We've tried numerous times to get that done, and we can't get it done. All we get is pushback from Arbor, and they're the, you know, I don't want to say anything bad about anybody, but they're the only organization I've ever run into in seven years that seems to hate our existence. And it, it's, it's maddening. But yes, back to the original thing, we will start the moving process tomorrow.
Great, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So motion on the floor, unless you're speaking to it?
I was just going to ask a question of Steve. Turn your mic on.
Steve, thank you. The quick question I do have is I appreciate the, starting the moving process and pulling things together. What if that meeting were to happen like in the next couple of days? Would it screw you up that much?
Uh...
And the reason why I'm asking the question is be, is just to, to see if we can get, the school seat is pejorative against them, that we just, in their opinion, unilaterally just decide, "Yeah, we don't care what you, we don't care, we're just going to go ahead." So that's why I was holding off on making the decision, so that it gave them, gave them the breathing room and the ability to come to the table with the ability, hopefully, to start to break down a couple of these walls. Because at some point, you guys might be back in 18 months. Let's not play this game again.
I, I agree. And I wish that they would step forward and come and meet with us, because most people that do come away with a changed opinion of us. We're not, we are drug and alcohol-free camp. We do everything we can to play by everybody's rules, and it, and it's not to benefit anyone, really, but our camp, because we need a, a good place to be stable at.
Right.
And we have never done anything against Arbor or threatened them in any way. And every time that something does happen around Arbor School, they point toward us.
Oh, they're sure, yeah, I know.
We would really love for them to come down and see who we are, talk to us, meet every one of us, see what our meager facilities are, and, and just get to know us. If they would do that, this would all stop on their side.
That's what I, that's what I wonder. Could that bridge be crossed so that...
That would depend on Arbor. If they, if they're willing to do that, we have always been willing to do that.
Okay.
And, but, you know, this moving process will start tomorrow, depending on the decision tonight.
Okay. That's hel, that's helpful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mary Lamb, are you speaking to the motion on the floor?
Oh, no, I'm speaking to Steve.
So I feel like we're getting like way outside of the, are we still good, Carrie?
It's the prerogative of the council, Mayor.
Okay, go for it.
So if we don't pass the ordinance, you will have to move, you'll start moving tomorrow, right?
The process will start tomorrow.
The process will start. And so does a week make a huge difference to you, like if it comes a week later?
It does make a big difference to us, because it, we'll have to plan on going to High Point. We have no, and contrary to popular belief in this meeting tonight, outreach hasn't never stopped. It, it's just difficult to get people to host us. So it's not a matter of we're just sitting back and doing nothing, and it, it's never been the case. If it were, I wouldn't be standing here in front of all of you tonight. And this isn't the only group that I speak to. So it would make a huge difference, and I, I hope and I pray that you will give us the emergency extension tonight. It, it would really give us breathing room to, for these fine folks over here to finalize their deals and, and get everything going.
Okay, I'm just trying to like get a better understanding. We'll find out tonight whether or not the Spirit of Peace, you know, will accept, you know, the Tent City Four, correct? So would you still need to move to High Point? Like, won't we know tonight?
Perhaps not. We, we may be able to find another place to go, because it's not the only negotiations we have going. You know, we, we talked to multiple, well, we don't really have really solid negotiations going with anybody but Spirit of Peace, but we have irons in the fire, so to say. So we could turn to someone else and see if we could get something else going.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, it's 9:15. Have they voted?
I've got a text.
Okay. I got a text. All right, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just want to, just for clarification, so the, our Savior Lutheran leadership is voting tonight. They, they will, as I understand it, have one other step after that in, in terms of taking it to their full congregation. So this is their leadership team. I believe, based on the letter that we received from the co-presidents, that they have every confidence that if the leadership team moves forward, that the congregation will follow. And we still have to wait for the timelines from the city of Issaquah. So if we don't approve this emergency tonight, then Tent City Four will begin the process of moving to High Point, because they don't have another location certain, and they won't. They won't tonight, and they probably won't by next Tuesday either. So they will have to start the process of moving to High Point. They will have to expend energy and time and money to start securing things like trucks and, you know, getting fencing moved and things like that. So those things will have to happen tonight if we don't approve this emergency extension. And there are, I know that there are a number of locations that they've been talking to in addition to Issaquah, but this is the, this is what we've got right now before us. Thank you.
All right, are we ready to vote? Okay, so all those in favor to delay the ordinance by one week, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, by one six, that fails. Councilmember Stewart, I assume? Would you like to make another motion?
Could I get the language? I just want to make sure we get this just right, please. Is it in the agenda bill there?
It is.
Sorry, let me get new motion.
For the revisit?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so I would like to make a motion that we approve, sorry, what am I, is it just this right here? That we approve the ordinance for temporarily amending the Sammamish Municipal Code, Section 21.05.O30K2A, to grant an additional duration of stay not to exceed April 7th, 2023, for the temporarily, temporary homeless encampment permit number TUP 2022-00808, declaring an emergency, scheduling a public hearing, and providing for severability.
Second? But not scheduling a hearing?
Section of the ordinance refers to this, giving the city manager the authority to set the public hearing to a date that would be within the 60-day window. That's how the ordinance currently reads.
Okay, so we're good there.
I, I will just add that that is required by state law.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved, seconded. Councilmember Trine, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so just for clarification, so this is an emergency declaration and temporary amendment, correct?
Correct, those are the two actions.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, all those in favor of that, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, 7-0, that has been passed for not to exceed April 7th, so I don't know what that date is, but...
That's a Friday.
Thank you.
Friday, April 7th.
Great, thank you so much. All right, we are now on to council reports. Deputy Mary Lamb?
I think my council report is like kind of appropriate right now. I went to the King County Housing Affordability Symposium last week, and there were a lot of electeds and industry professionals, and we gathered to talk about housing affordability. My two big takeaways from this is that, well, one, affordable housing and homelessness for the first time has eclipsed transportation as the top priority for the state of Washington. I think that, you know, really shows how critical the situation is. And my second takeaway, which actually I think is really interesting, there was a researcher there named Greg Colburn, and he was interested in finding out why the rates of homelessness varied so much among cities. Like, why was it so high in certain cities and relatively low in other cities? And through his research, one of the things that he realized was that the rates of homelessness are the highest in the cities that have the highest rent and the lowest rental vacancies. So in King County, we are the number eight city in terms of homelessness per capita. The highest is New York City, Boston, and DC. What he also discovered was homelessness rates are the lowest where poverty is the highest. So by that, I mean, in, in Seattle, if, you know, a one-bedroom house, apartment will probably cost $2,000. In Detroit, which is a very impoverished city, you can get the same equivalent apartment for $500. And so their rates of homelessness is half of what it is in Seattle. So I think, you know, as we go forth this year and we discuss housing affordability, it is really important, you know, to see and to understand how closely tied homelessness is to housing affordability. And, you know, we can, we can lower homelessness just by increasing the amount of housing units that we build throughout the United States. I also have a Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee meeting tomorrow. There's, all the topics are discussion. We'll be talking about the solid waste rate restructure. The discussion is discussing a new rate structure, which is a fixed charge versus total tonnage of waste. We will also be discussing the affordable housing countywide planning policies. We are looking at amending some of the policies to include additional tools to make sure that there's accountability for jurisdictions to meet their housing targets. And lastly, we will be discussing the regional homelessness... And lastly, we will be discussing the Regional Homelessness Authority five-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have a verbal report? Scott, do you have anything, city manager report?
Not tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Great. All right, I think we are good. Anything else for the...
Move to adjourn?
Yes. Second. All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.